Pay no attention to the man behind the curtain. Which are open for public attendance and participation. The meeting will also be livestreamed for public viewing but not participation at the link identified in the agenda. Email comments sent and received by a city clerk at least 24 hours before the meeting were distributed to the city council prior to the meeting. May I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Harris.
Here.
Vice Mayor Shaw.
Here.
Councilmember Boomgarden.
Here.
Councilmember Kirchner.
Here.
Councilmember Pesquale.
Here.
Mr. City Attorney, you're on, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have one item for closed session. Item A, the conference of legal counsel existing litigation pursuant to government cut section 54956.91. Name of case, Flores versus the City of Yuba City. Case number CVC S223820.
All right. Do we have any comments from the curling factor? Nothing. All right, we will adjourn to closed session. All right, welcome, everybody. This meeting is being held in the council chambers which are open for public attendance and participation. The meeting will also be livestreamed for public viewing but not participation, and the link identified in the agenda. Email comments sent and received prior to the city clerk at least 24 hours before the meeting were distributed to the city council prior to the meeting. May I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Harris.
Here.
Vice Mayor Shaw.
Here.
Councilmember Boomgarden.
Here.
Councilmember Kirchner.
Here.
Councilmember Pesquale.
Here.
All right, thank you. If we can all stand for invocation by Vice Mayor Shaw, followed by a pledge by Mayor, or excuse me, Councilmember Kirchner.
Let's pray. Our gracious heavenly Father, we just thank you for the opportunity that you give us to serve, and serve each other as members of this community. Father, looking around the room tonight, I'm often reminded of those who put themselves before others with all of our law enforcement officers here tonight. Father, I just pray that you would just put a hedge of protection around them and their families. And Father, as we go forth tonight to make decisions that is for the betterment of our community, just pray that you'll just give us wisdom and discernment and clarity. In Jesus' name, amen.
Salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, very good. Mr. City Attorney, we have a report on closed session items.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There were no reportable action taken in closed session.
Thank you. Any modifications of the agenda? Nothing to be done? All right, so now for the good part. Can I have Officer Megan Ross come forward and join me and the rest of the council and whoever is presenting, I believe, chief if he's going to come down here? All right, please welcome U of C Police Officer Megan Ross, standing there all proud. That's great. The City of Yuba City proclaiming Officer Ross as the U of C Police Department's Officer of the Year for 2023, whereas Megan Ross began her career in law enforcement in 2019 as a police officer for the U of C Police Department. Officer Ross's dedication to not only her job as a patrol officer but as a dispatcher has provided needed relief to the dispatchers who have been working many extra hours. In 2023, Officer Ross worked her patrol shift along with 233 hours in the communications center. That's a big thing right there. She dedicated extra time to the K-9 program, which led her to being selected in 2023 as the department's newest K-9 handler. Officer Ross's hard work and dedication to her duties bring great credit to the U of C Police Department and to the law enforcement profession. That's certainly true. Whereas Officer Megan Ross has recognized in 2023 as the U of C Police Department Officer of the Year for her selfless dedication to her peers and the citizens of U of C. Now therefore be resolved that I, Sean Harris, Mayor of the City of Yuba City, on behalf of the entire city council and citizens we serve, do hereby congratulate Officer Megan Ross on the occasion of her selection as the 2023 U of C Police Department Officer of the Year. Let's give her a hand. Now the fun part.
No.
No? You sure?
I'll say something.
All right, good.
I was already told I had to say something. First and foremost, obviously, thank you for my peers, for this honor and thinking that I deserve this award. Thank you for my friends for coming tonight, the whole U of C Police Department and city council. I'm truly honored by this award and thankful that people will think I deserve it.
Very well said. Congratulations. Ben's got it, okay. And we're going to get family, too, if you all want to. A whole bunch. And we have more stuff for you, too. Do you want to wait till you get everything? We'll give way till you do everything. Okay, hold on. Come on. All right, that's not all. Laura, excuse me, please welcome Laura Nicholson, representing Senator Neelo's office. She'll be followed by Isabella Morgan from Assemblyman Gallagher's office, and David from Congressman LaMoff's office.
So on behalf of Senator Neelo, it is truly an honor and a privilege to present you with this resolution, and you'll hear from Assemblyman Gallagher next. This is a symbol to thank you for all that you have done, for the community, for us, keeping us safe, working with your peers, everything that you do, and with great congratulations and gratitude as the Peace Officer of the Year for U of C PD. Congratulations.
So on behalf of Assemblyman Gallagher's office, we just want to thank you so much for all the hard work that you do. I know it's not easy, and it's not a job that everyone can do. And for you to excel and show everyone that it is possible and showcase the type of person that you are to this community, we just want to congratulate you. And as you go on in your future endeavors, we just want to wish you the very best.
Thank you.
Of course.
Oh, wait, there's more. David, with Congressman Doug LaMoff's office. It's my honor to present you this special congressional certificate from Congressman Doug LaMoff, recognizing your 2023 Officer of the Year. We appreciate everything that you do, continue to do, and congratulations on your achievement. And we wish you all the best as your career continues forward. Thank you and congratulations.
Thank you.
So yeah, that's very important. And you know, we're going to have the family come up here in a second. We'll get a good photograph. But I think family is important, too, because Officer could not have done what she did without knowing that she has the support from family at home. All the long hours, all the holidays, all the events missed and whatnot cannot be done without family support. And one thing Laura said recently at a similar presentation is you're getting this for being recognized for what you've done. But I'm sorry. Not only what you've done, what we know you did, but what we don't know you did. Because there are so many things that you all do when we're all home sleeping. Everybody back here, while we were all home sleeping, you're out there taking care of business for us. And we really appreciate that. And it's happy to hear me. I wonder what happened, sorry. Swallowed a feather or something. So, that being said, and I don't mean to make you turn red.
I'm turning red.
I think what we typically do is we'll have all the family. It looks like a lot of smiling faces out there. They're really proud of you right now. We want to make sure they get a chance to take, snap a photo. So we'll all get behind and stand back there. You all can stand up here however you want to do it, and we can all take all the photos you want. Okay? All right. Congratulations.
Does it feel like the mic is on?
No.
Doesn't mean it.
A little bit, a little bit.
Here's another one right here.
Get the whole crowd in.
Good, how are you? All right. Probably doing what all cops do in this state. I gave her the chance. Give a couple more minutes for the... Thank you, Spencer. Let them have their moment. Very well deserved for her. We'll move on to item number two. The appearance of interested citizens. We are welcome and encouraged to participate in this meeting. Public comment is taken on actions appearing on the consent calendar or business items on the agenda when they are called. Public comment on any other items within the scope of the city's jurisdiction, including items not listed on the agenda, will be considered at this time. Public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker. Members of the public submitting written requests at least 24 hours prior to the meeting will be allotted five minutes to comment per speaker. Repetitive comments may be limited, and large groups are encouraged to select representatives to express the opinions of the group. Do we have any comments from the public? I read all that or nothing? It's all good. We'll move on to item number three, consent, or excuse me, to the consent calendar. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and can be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items prior to the time the council votes on the motion unless members of the city council request specific items to be removed or removed from the consent calendar for individual action. Do we have any comments from the public on the consent calendar items three through 10? All right.
Move to...
Hold on.
Can we remove number 10 just to talk about it a little bit?
Yep. Whatever that one is, I can't remember. Merriment Village, sure. So now we are seeking action on consent calendar items three through nine.
Consent calendar three through nine?
All right, second. I have a first and a second. That would be first from Councilmember Pesquale, second through Vice Mayor Shaw. Consent calendar three through nine. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, three through nine, and we will go on to number 10.
Through the mayor, I noticed that we have Mr. Nicoletti in the audience, and I also know our city manager who was instrumental, excuse me, in...
Me, too.
In this recent award for Merriment Village. I don't want to put John on the spot, but if you don't mind, perhaps we could chat a little bit about this grant that the city just received. Thanks, John.
Thank you, Councilman, and good evening. John Nicoletti with Habitat for Humanity. Just want to mention that this is a $100 million grant that was applied to Home Key 3 in the state of California. The city of San Diego, very well organized, $35 million assigned, but we were up against everybody in the state. And I think it's interesting when you look at the population counts of San Diego, the county of Los Angeles, the city of Los Angeles, the city of Fresno, the city of Oakland, and the city of Yuba City. And of those cities mentioned, this city acquired 25% of that available money. That's significant. And it would not have happened, it could not have happened, if it wasn't for this city manager. And what's amazing to me is that if we're in any of those other listed cities in Oakland or San Francisco or Los Angeles, as a citizen, would I expect to have easy access to the city manager of those metropolitan centers or the chief of police or the people that really drive or to be in the rare air of the elected class? No. But here we made it happen. We're really thrilled. And I can just say that the young families, the seniors, the people with disabilities, the veterans that will be served in this process are going to have a whole new access to quality of life. And it is secured with fencing. There is lots of security for nights and weekends. But during the day, we want to open it up for the citizens of Yuba City to access as well. So there will be a number of different services that will be performed there. So we're really, really pleased and really proud to be a part of this community. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Good call on polling. Would you have any comments, sir?
Yeah, just real quick. I think, you know, anytime that we, as a city, led by our city manager and her staff, several of them are here that were part of this, grant application along with others in the community, and I'm sure you'll hear more about that as a project moves forward. But anytime we can return taxpayer stalers back here to our community, I think it's a home run. And that's what this project's going to do. Certainly not going to completely fix a problem, but it certainly puts, you know, begins to put a good dent in, as John mentioned, seniors, veterans, and those who are precariously housed or unhoused right now. And it's just, it's a proud moment in Yuba City's history, I think, to be able to qualify for this grant against a lot of competition. So anyway, I just want to publicly acknowledge, John, Habitat for Humanity, there's a, again, there's a whole host of people that if I started reeling them, I'm going to forget somebody, and that's not going to be good. But yeah, Ben Moody. I mean, like I said, I could go on and on and on. But anyway, I just wanted to acknowledge that. That award came last week, I believe. So I wanted to make sure that we took this opportunity to acknowledge it. Thank you.
Very good. Looking forward to seeing it start, getting it all rolling. Thank you, John. All right, excuse me. Now we're at number 11, business items for host fee, what?
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
Hold on, I just messed something up. Everyone's calling my name. Did I forget something?
Need to vote on 10.
Just to take a vote on number 10.
Oh, we did. Thank you very much. Number 10. Vote, please.
Through the mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve consent, calendar item number 10, Merriment Village Department's Home Key Grant applications.
I'll second whatever that was.
I don't feel so bad. All right, all those in favor, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye. Capital I. Opposed? Nothing. Congratulations. We're moving on. Sorry about that. Thank you for the catch. Now we're on number 11, host fee agreement with Recycling Industries, presented by Ben Moody.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. So the item before you is in regards to replacing the interim host fee agreement with Recycling Industries with the host fee agreement as proposed. And so with that, I'll work through some of the deal points and where we're at. So just a quick history, a little bit of history for the audience. Recycling Industries, RI, initially operated recycling center at 140 Epley Drive under use permit 0712 that was approved by the planning commission in February of 2008. In 2012, Recycling Industries applied for an use permit 12-01 to convert a recycling center into a large volume transfer station. After a public hearing in July 2014, the planning commission approved use permit 1201. In February of 2019, council approved use permit 1705 and development plan 1703 adopting a mitigated negative declaration, environmental assessment, amending the previous entitlements with a key limitation setting a maximum allowable processing limit of 100 tons per day for the facility at Epley Drive. And so with that, as part of the conditions of that use permit, there was a host fee requirement. And so with as part of the operations for the large volume transfer station. So with that, in August of 21, council and RI approved an interim host fee agreement to work, as the city worked through a host fee analysis and specifics for a long-term agreement. And so since that time, the city's worked with industry consultants, R3 Consulting Group. They conducted a host fee analysis, and they looked at the impacts. They looked at also other, the analysis of other agencies, other large volume stations, and where that puts it with a recommendation for a fee, for the cost. And so the proposed host fee considers, so after, so we set up an interim agreement, we've done a deep dive into the analysis, and what we've come back is what we're proposing here, where this proposed host fee considers R3 recommendations, the data analysis, and negotiations with RI. And so the key points in the proposed agreement is a rate of $4.08 per ton of waste transferred to the landfill effective January 1, 2025, an annual inflation index of not less than zero but capped at 3%, a 10-year term with an option for a five-year extension, and then clarity regarding beginning at the end of the third year, the city and I, and Recycling Industry reserve the right at their own expense to analyze the applicable host fee during that term. So if either party wants to do a nexus study, a new nexus study, and dive into what that cost is at their own cost, they could look into that and then be considered for a modification with a mutual party agreement. An option to review the host fee if a change in entitlement should affect the allowed tonnage volume. So those are real key points. And so pretty much it's setting the rate after the first year at 408, and then it establishes this inflation factor with a term. And those are really the main changes to the agreement. Currently, the tonnage, just for reference, it's about the outgoing tonnage is approximately 1,300 tons a quarter, which is about 15 to 20 tons a day, based on the daily tonnage. And that doesn't directly correlate to the 100 tons in. It depends on how much is that recycled that day. The applicants here, and they could definitely go into details about the tonnage or the use. But right now, of that 100 tons, they're using approximately 15 to 20 tons a day going out to the landfill. And so with that, it's really a recommendation to adopt a resolution to propose the proposed host fee agreement between the City of Yuba City and Recycling Industries. If there is, there is a current interim host fee in place, and so the alternative is that you stay with the current interim host fee agreement or provide direction, another direction. Be happy to answer any questions.
All right, no questions from council. I have one speaker card from Scott Cunin.
Is that it? Okay. Good evening, Mayor Harris. City council members and members of the community. My name is Scott Cunin. I'm CEO and president of Recycling Industries, and I'm also a property owner, along with other members of my family. Of the subject site we are discussing tonight, from the beginning, this whole process, we have maintained that keeping this host fee the same as Marysville's host fee would be the fair and equitable position for both parties. This agreement before you tonight, we believe achieves that position and preserves both parties the right to discuss the matter in the future. Recycling Industries has been and will continue to be a strong community partner. In fact, Recycling Industries gives back to the community by working with amazing organizations such as Say Love. We allow Say Love to bring all of the illegally dumped garbage they collect to our transfer station for free. We hope to be able to continue to offer this benefit to Say Love and the community. In closing, we are happy to sign this agreement and hope this host fee matter remains fair and equitable for the future and for all concerned.
Thank you, Mr. Cunin. Appreciate it. Any other member of the public care to speak on item number 11? All right, that being said, we can come back for action.
Through the mayor.
Yes, sir.
Simply, we move to adopt a resolution to approve the proposed host fee that Mr. Moody brought forward tonight, the agreement between the City of Yuba City and RI.
Second. All right, I have a first and a second to approve. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? None. Thank you very much. Move on to number 12, the city welcome sign ad hoc committee, presented by Ashley Patoch. Okay, I'll get, I think I'm going to mentally put an H after the second O. That might help me out there. Okay.
You can just call me Ashley.
Ah, I want to get it right. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. Tonight, I will be discussing the city welcome sign project, so kind of a fun, fun project we've got going on. So the city has two welcome signs. Everyone in this room is probably pretty familiar with that. There's one south of Yuba City, just before you come to Bog Road on Highway 99, and then one on the western side of Highway 20, around Township. And those signs were removed due to disrepair. So the city has been working on a way to get new signs there. So what we did is a two-part process. The first part of that process was a design competition, and the design competition was opened in December, and we've now received 10 submissions of design concepts for the welcome signs. The item tonight is to establish an ad hoc committee to review those submittals. And then following that, the second phase of this process is a request for proposals that will be sent out to the public. So here's a little bit of the history, as I already mentioned. Tonight is the recommendation for an ad hoc committee to review the submissions. And then in the call for artists that was released in December, it does identify March 5 as the announcement date of a winner. However, if that date is not going to be necessary due to scheduling issues, we can work with you on that. So staff recommends that an ad hoc committee be established with two council members, and a committee member be selected from each of the city's commissions, the planning commission, senior commission, Parks and Rec commission, and the youth commission. So with that, I will give you my recommendation to establish and designate two council members to steer the city welcome sign ad hoc committee.
All right, before we move, before we do that, does any member of the public wish to comment on the item? Agreed, agreed. We've been getting emails and questions about that for probably over a year now. What's wrong with the sign? Anybody want to comment officially? Are you sure? All right. Now we have the task, the request is to appoint two council members. Anybody particularly interested? Now we'll move on to number 13. Water Tower Plaza Name and Mural Designs Ad Hoc Committee presented by Josh Wolf. Patouchnik, got it?
Good evening, mayor and members of the council. My name is Josh Wolf, Associate Engineer with the Engineering Department. Tonight, I'm here to talk to you about an ad hoc committee for the Water Tower Plaza name and the mural designs. So here's just a picture of the project for the plaza under the park we are currently working on. The areas we're concerned with tonight are this wall right here and this wall right here along Babysittines. We'll get into that a little bit more in the coming slides. So as a background, we received a Clean California grant in 2022 for $2.2 million in funding to, to improvements along Pluma Street, under the water tower, the murals adjacent to the water tower and along Center Street. Total project scope, we have four main components, one being the water tower repainting and lighting. So the top left photo here, you see the new logos that have just gone on the water tower, I believe, last week. And then here's a picture of the lights in the evening before we got the logos up. Next in line would be Center Street lining. That one's currently in process. Bottom left is the Water Tower Park. Here's a rendering of what it may look like in, in this summer. And then the gateway arch. So for this presentation, the two main items are the murals, one along Lee's Canton. On top left, you see here the remnant of the mural that I think was installed in 2007. And then along Babysittines, this wall. And then we're also wanting to have the ad hoc committee for the name of the plaza. So first, the mural design. The city staff has been coordinating with the Yuba Sutter Arts to determine the best way to go about procuring an artist to do, to install the murals along the two walls. The plan is to release a call to artists for the mural designs once we have decided on what the final designs will be. Some ideas have come to, come to place so far, one of which is a historical timeline of the Yuba City area, starting in the 1850s when the Yuba City area was just a, was a small town by the river with a steamboat landing. Then moving on into the early 1900s, Yuba City being incorporated in 1908, 1917 Sun Suite was founded, 1924 to the late 60s, the fires, the city's first fire station operated under the city water tower. And here's a photo of that right here with, you can faintly see the water tower legs behind it. And then 50s through the 80s, the 1955 flood, which can be seen along Pluma Street in this photo, in a tribute to Officers Blackburn and Tally. 1980, the inaugural Sikh parade, and then finally present day. Some other ideas that came up as well, paying homage to some famous individuals such as Max Staffey, who's on the Anaheim Angels now, doing an overall theme for the Yuba City Fire Department and then potentially having some hidden items causing, or allowing people to look closer at the mural such as the famous Yuba City chickens and Sun Suite prunes. So moving on to the plaza name, the city does have a park naming policy which we would use to determine if the proposed names would be appropriate. Some of the factors in that being geographical or historical significance, historical or influential figures or, and community input. Some names that we've received as interest from the community so far would be Downtown Plaza, Pluma Street Plaza, Plaza 1908, Don Covey Plaza, and Water Tower Plaza. To ensure the fair and best interest selection of designs, staff recommends creation of an ad hoc committee run by two council members and including, a recommendation of committee mem, or, yeah, committee member from these following organizations, including Downtown Business Organization, the building owners of the two buildings, the planning commission, senior commission, parks and rec commission, youth commission, and one that isn't listed here but would be a, a benefit to the committee would be the Yuba Sutter Arts Committee. We anticipate that the final recommendations would be made by early spring of 2024. There's minor impact, or minor fiscal impacts associated with this would just be staff time for helping coordinate the committee. Alternative would be not forming a committee and providing staff with direction on designing, or on the mural design and plaza design. What staff does recommend is establishing and designating two council members to facilitate the Water Tower Plaza name and mural design ad hoc committee. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from council?
I just have one, I guess. First, Max Staffey's playing for the White Sox now, just a point to note. No more, no more Anaheim for a while anyway. I guess because we're in districts now, the, the issue for me would be is, are the two folks that, that share Pluma Street, should it be, should it be them on an ad hoc committee or should it be open to all of us? I, I don't know.
Okay. I would, I will say that I would like to be on it because I'm Yuba Sutter Arts representative and whatnot, but I think it would be appropriate for it to offer all of us. However, if the two who represent Pluma Street, I mean, it's a citywide amenity, citywide benefit, we're all represent the city, so probably go with it at large.
Yeah, I personally don't have a feeling. I would just say that those folks represent that area and therefore if they were interested, I would certainly support that. And if they're not like you, I'd be interested as well, so.
Yeah, okay. I already gave up my, my cards.
You and I, Councilman Shaw, do you like, or would you like me to step up to that too?
Myself, I would, this is the one ad hoc I was interested in, and so I would like to serve on it. But it's the mayor's choice, is the way I see it, so.
If you gentlemen would like to do it, I can, I will honor that. I will, I will honor that, that's fine.
You can represent the art council.
And I will, I will. One way or the other, but so, yeah. I think that was a good point to bring that up. If you gentlemen are both interested, are you interested or indifferent or?
I, I'm fine. If you wanna do it, do it. If not, I will step up.
Then I will. All right, so it's myself and Vice Mayor.
Okay. And Mr. Mayor, before we make final determination, perhaps we could let this go out to public comment?
I, that was my next thing. And I'm not kidding, I really did remember it this time. Any public comment on the item? Sandy, come on down or up.
Is that better? There we go. All right, thank you, mayor and council for your time. I just wanted to say thank you for making sure that the DBA had a spot. And first, my name is Sandy Drown with the Downtown Business Association and also my husband and I own the Happy Viking. I'd like to just thank for adding us to this ad hoc committee. I was watching the one prior and I was like, oh! So we appreciated, the merchants downtown really wanna make sure that this, we feel like this is our front yard. So I appreciate you guys giving us a seat at the table and how you guys worked that whole thing out from the beginning. But the downtown is very appreciative of this ground, our relationship with the city, and we're excited about this. We're gonna just get like a whole new remodel downtown, so anyways. And we look forward to having you guys all come out and visit us more too. So anyways, thank you.
Thank you, Sandy. David.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council and members of the public. Excuse me, I've got what you got.
Yeah.
And I haven't been to Japan, but it's, I just wanted to say it's been an honor working with Mr. Wolf the last couple of months since he reached out to us about this project. And it's, it's interesting, it's sort of serendipitous because as some of you may know, in April, we're hosting at the Sutter Theater a mural marathon. What, what is that? Well, it's where artists come together and in a period of, in our case, 48 hours, they're creating five large murals on the side of the Sutter Theater. That's the Church Street side. This is something we borrowed from the city of Reno. We did one in Live Oak a few years ago, but the artists are pre-selected, there'll be submissions. We have a call to artists out now. And I just wanna mention that in light of the fact that, as Sandy mentioned, kind of a reinvention, if you will, of Pluma Street or adding on to all the great work that's been done there over the years. And so these kinds of public artworks, you know, create an additional reason, just like our theater, for people to come to downtown Yuba City, Pluma Street, to experience the arts, whether it's the outdoor art gallery that we're essentially creating, and then enjoy live theater and music performances, either in the restaurants and bars or in our facility, the Sutter Theater Center for the Arts, and then to spill out into the various restaurants and really enjoy that whole experience. So it, it's great to be part of this and we're happy to support the city as we develop the call to artists and, and hopefully get a lot of great submissions and work with the committee to keep the project moving forward. So thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, Jeff.
I was some planning on speaking on this. I wasn't even sure that, I didn't even know this was on the agenda for tonight, but I, I would like to make you all aware, this project came about from a phone call that I made to Brad McIntyre way back when this grant was achieved. And I was aware of a grant over in Yuba County and I, I contacted Brad about this grant two weeks before it was due, and he, he did not know anything about it. So he was able to put together a group and make this happen. And that came through me and my involvement with Say Love. So just seeing all the different groups in here, I'd love to see Say Love represented in some way on this project, so that would be my only comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Josh, question for you. The mural, is the logo gonna be on two sides, the north side and south side?
Logo.
I'm sorry, not the mural, on the water tower.
Yes, so the logos were placed southwest and northeast, so along the, along Bridge Street corridor and then splitting the difference between the 5th and 10th Street Bridge.
Okay, perfect. Thank you very much. I've just, I was asked that today and I didn't have a definite answer, so thank you very much. Okay, so you good, Mr. Pasquale? You good?
Yes.
Okay.
I do have a question.
Go ahead.
You are going to add the ninth member because otherwise we'll have an even number committee and it's not a good thing.
Yeah. We'll discuss, yeah. Today we're pointing, we're putting us two, which would be myself and Vice Mayor, so we're good? No more public comment? All right. And good point on that and good point on your suggestion, sir. All right, move on to, we have a time sensitive item at, in five minutes, so let's move on to for now, number 14. Fiscal year 2324, public safety mid-year budget adjustments.
Good evening, mayor, council members. Tonight, myself and Chief Baker are gonna be talking to you about mid-year budget adjustments for public safety. But before I do that, I'd like to give you a background on the fire department. So YCFD staffs five strategically fire stations located throughout the city with a daily minimum staffing of 17 personnel. That's 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. Our operation staff does this by staffing four three-person fire engines, one four-person aerial ladder truck, and one battalion chief. There is an exception to that staffing model. In 2021, we received the Staffing for Adequate Fire and Emergency Response Grant, also known as SAFER. And what that grant allowed us to do was to add a fourth person to our aerial ladder truck and to get our minimum staffing to 17. That grant did give us the flexibility in situations where we were gonna have a station closure to be able to relocate that firefighter onto a fire engine. For this fiscal year, 14 times, we have removed that, that fourth person on the aerial to maintain an open fire station. Those individuals on the operational staff, there is the potential for them to be on a form of leave. That could be one of the following, such as vacation, sick leave, family sick, industrial disability injuries, training, or Family or Medical Leave Act, also known as FMLA. When those individuals are on one of those types of leaves, their position on the apparatus needs to be backfilled with an overtime position. We do not have overstaffed personnel, so it has to be an overtime personnel. Those funds come out of our regular overtime budget account. And you can see here for the last five years, these are our fiscal years here, these were the amounts budgeted in that, that specific line item. And then if I'd like to point out, this is the end of the year actual. And what we are projecting right now with our situation is about a 1.9 million from that account. You can see it's fairly close to the end of the year actuals for the last three years, but unfortunately, it is a significant difference from the budgeted amount. The reason why we're partially in this situation is in fiscal year 2324, we've seen an increase in industrial disability injuries, also known as workers' comp, and Family and Medical Leave Act, like I said, FMLA. During the first six and a half months of this fiscal year, we've had 10 individuals on disability injuries at 6,900 hours of leave usage due to disability injuries. That's, that's an enormous amount. The approximate cost to backfill those individuals just on workers' comp injury was 420,000 for the first six and a half months of this fiscal year. We've also seen that increase in the FMLA. Same thing with first six and a half months of this fiscal year, we've had eight individuals on FMLA. A major contributing factor to that was having in the operation, or as a department staff, we've had 15 babies in calendar year 2023, so that did take a big chunk of that portion. This fiscal year, we've had over 1,500, almost 1,600 hours of leave usage due to FMLA, and the approximate backfill to that is $91,000. As a result of just those two types of leave, we've calculated a roughly $511,000 to maintain our daily minimum staffing for the first six and a half months. Using our normal budget process to project out where we are, would be at, at the end of the year, we're analyzing that we're gonna be $975,067 short of our, our projected year. As a result, before I get into turning this over to Chief Baker, what we'd be seeking from tonight's presentation is $927,067, utilizing projected salary savings within the general fund. And if those funds or projected salary funds do not materialize, then to transfer the amount from unallocated general, general fund CIP accounts. So the alternatives that would be potential if the is not recommended is to modify the recommended amount of salary savings from the general fund or direct staff to pursue other options for maintaining budget requirements. Before I turn it over to Chief Baker, are there any questions?
Through the mayor. Chief, on the, on the slide, it said 975 and in the, the information that we have, it says 927. Just trying to make sure we're giving you the amount that you need.
It appears to be an error, so on this slide. So the correct per the staff report is 927, so I will make sure.
That's a better answer, thanks.
Nice try. Just kidding, that's.
I, I film enough.
Just kidding, you're, you're good, you're good. All right, anything else? All right.
Evening, mayor, members of the council. So the police department has a few mid-year budget requests pertaining to a couple of different things. Two items are pertaining to infrastructure and two items are pertaining to needs for technology upgrades within our investigations division. We've utilized mass storage devices, USBs, going back in time, DVDs, those types of things. We're having issues with some of those devices failing. We're having problems with finding ways to store the mass amounts of digital evidence that we recover from many of our investigations. So we currently have a contract with Axon and we'll, with this $68,500 purchase, that'll give us three years of unlimited digital storage. It'll also allow members of the community, when we go out to a crime, if we need to capture video surveillance, we can give them a link and they can upload it to the system and it's just a good resources overall for the department. The second is Celebrite Phone Analyzer. The current device is becoming obsolete. The, the new device that we're looking at purchasing- So we currently have a contract with Axon, and we'll, with this $68,500 purchase, that'll give us three years of unlimited digital storage. It'll also allow members of the community, when we go out to a crime, if we need to capture video surveillance, we can give them a link and they can upload it to the system, and it's just a good resources overall for the department. The second is Celebrite Phone Analyzer. The current device is becoming obsolete. The, the new device that we're looking at purchasing combines the processes, saving staff a lot of time, and this device, process device is faster. Many times, we have up to 10 to 15 cell phones that need to be processed for cases that they're working, and the cost for this is $32,000 over four years. We received a significant discount by entering into a four-year contract with these folks. The second, the, first of the facility repairs would be for the roof. Maintenance spends a lot of time at the PD every time it rains. A few weeks ago, we had rain, or we had rain basically leaking down the wall, interior wall of one of the offices. We're going to look at procuring a similar elastomeric system that's been used throughout other city facilities. Maintenance also noted that there's a cost savings due to the fact that it's reflective in the summer months. Cost of that's about $70,000. And the Police Department flooring, facilities maintenance has been trying to identify some ways to fix that. There's some significant cracking that's occurring, and they've identified that some of the non-slip surfaces worn away, and so they're recommending that we apply a polyurethane coating to address those issues and the cost of about $36,000. With these two facility maintenance issues, they've obtained quotes from all local vendors, so that'll be money being spent with vendors here in the community. So with that, I'll have any questions.
All right, comments from council?
I've got a question.
Sir?
Chief, how long's the life of the elastomeric roofing? Did they tell you that when they did the estimate?
I think, in talking to one of the contractors, it could be around 15 to 20 years, is what their hope is.
Okay. All right, good.
All right, any member of the public care to comment on the item? Okay, we can come back for action?
If I could add one more thing.
Yes, sir.
Basically, we're not asking for any additional funds. We have money in our budget from unallocated salary savings due to vacancies, so it'll basically be an overspend for our facilities maintenance and our investigations technology budget.
And to backfill it, yeah, got it.
Yes. Through the mayor?
Yep.
I move to adopt a resolution authorizing the Finance Director to make supplemental appropriations and related transfers for the items noted on the screen there for the Fire Department, totaling 975,067, and then a supplemental for the PD.
Second?
Second, first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Saying aye, aye, and opposed, none. Got it. Thank you very much. Now we have an item that's time-sensitive for 650, which is Public Hearing Number Five for Updating the City Councilmember District Boundaries for NX Property Presented by City Manager Diana Langley.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I just want to clarify something on the last item really quick. So I just want to note that the resolution was for 975,067, and so even though the previous comment was the 927, what we're requesting approval for is the $975,067. So I just want to make sure that council recognized that that's what you voted on. Okay. Thank you. Thank you. All right. Congratulations, you made it to the fifth public hearing for the, the boundary modification. I feel like we should have a little celebration here. All right, and so, as previously discussed, we've had some areas annexed into the city over the last couple of years, in the southwestern portion of town and then directly south of town. Over the course of the last few months, we've held four previous public hearings. Tonight is the fifth public hearing, and then, and the next, the next item, we'll actually introduce the ordinance. Any NX property must be added to the nearest existing council district, which in this case is Districts Four and Five, and no other changes to existing council districts can occur. At the first public hearing, we did receive public input requesting that this area be added to District Four, and then this area be split by Highway 99, where this portion goes to District Four and this portion goes to District Five. That matched up with what staff was recommending for a modification. And so that tonight, we're requesting that you conduct a public hearing to receive public input on district boundaries and select a preferred updated district boundary map, and then once that's completed, we'll immediately move on to the next item. And with that, I'll, I'll answer any questions.
I think we're good here, so we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Public hearing number five for updating the City Councilmember District Boundaries for NX Property is now open. If there are any members of the public who would like to address the council on the issue, please provide your statement via public comment and state your name and address for the record. Do we have any comments from the public on this item? Both online or in the room? All right?
Mr. Mayor, we do not have any online, or on the phone. Thank you.
All right. Whoops. Hearing no further comment on the issue, I'm closing public hearing, bringing back the matter to council. And we just have to, action is whether we select a preferred updated district boundary map.
Through the mayor.
Yes?
If the council members are inclined to accept staff's recommendation of, of the proposed map that's up there, you can just make a motion to accept staff's recommend, recommend. Through the mayor.
Motion to accept staff's recommendation.
Okay.
Second?
Second, first and second, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, and nay, nothing. All right, good, we're good. Thank you very much, Diana. Okay.
So if we could move on to do item 17 in conjunction with this, please?
May as well, yes. Go ahead.
All right, so this item is to actually begin the process to opt, adopt the updated district boundaries. And so, thank you, you just adopted the attached map, recommended for adoption, and so tonight, we will introduce the ordinance, and then March 5th, you will adopt the ordinance. And so the staff's recommendation is to introduce by title only an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Yuba City amending Section 2-9.05 of the Yuba City Municipal Code, adopting revised district boundaries, and waive the first reading.
Any public comment on that? Nope. Comment, council, if not, action. First by Councilmember Pasquale, and a second by Councilmember Kirchner. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
And opposed, none. Item passes. Back up to number 15, Shanghai Garden Park Playground Replacement Project Award and Purchase Presented by Ann Gillan, Community Services Director.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, council. So tonight, I'm going to talk about the playground equipment at Shanghai Garden Park. So a little bit of background, the lifespan of equipment is typically 15 to 20 years old. Shanghai Garden Park's playground was 24 years old. At the August 15th, City Councilmember, a couple of residents from the Shanghai neighborhood came in and expressed their concerns about the wear and tear on the playground equipment and how it's worn and unsafe. After inspecting and evaluating the safety of the equipment, our parks program went, our Parks Department went out and did it, they recommended removing the 5 to 12 age playground immediately. At the September 19th council meeting, council recommended remove, moving forward with removal and reallocating funds to cover the cost of purchasing a new playground. Since then, on November 28th, we did hold a park, a community meeting with the neighbors of the Shanghai Bend. We presented four different playground options for the replacement. The residents of Shanghai Garden Park area voted on which option they preferred, and the most popular option was that which was provided by BCI Burke Company, just Burke. On January 22nd, park staff presented the playground options to the Parks and Rec Commission. The Parks and Rec Commission also chose Burke's option as their preferred option. And this is the option that they chose. So the fiscal impact, we would need $130,000 from our CIP account number 122, annual playground replacement, $50,000 CIP account number 1298 Town Center Fountain, $78,946 CIP account number 1259, well installations and upgrades, a total of $258,947. So the, the Town Center Fountain and the well installation and upgrades, those projects are not anytime soon in the near future that those would be done. So the recommendation is to adopt a resolution, what takes the following actions: adopts a CEQA Class II categorical exemption, awards a construction contract to BCI Burke Company an amount of $258,947 through Sourcewell Contract number 01, 010521-BUR, with the finding that it is the best interest of the city, authorizes the city manager to execute all necessary documents related to the project, and authorizes the Finance Director to make the budget transfers necessary to fund the Shanghai Garden Park Playground Replacement Project. The, oh, how do I go back? So the alternative would be not to, do not award the Sourcewell Contract to BCI Burke Company and utilize the standard formal bidding procedures. And, any questions?
All right, thank you. Any questions from the public on the item? Nope. Counsel? Yes, sir?
Through the mayor, this, I, I support what you've put up there. I guess the question is more along the lines, and this might be more, better addressed by, by Spencer, is, this is $258,000, we've got many more parks, are we putting aside funds to replace these, given that we know what the lifespan is, so that we don't get sort of hit, if you will?
We did, we just did that.
Dr. Gillan knows, knows that we also, we do have a, a CIP project up there called Annual Playground, Playground Replacement, that we do try to fund as, with general fund money as possible. That's where that, that, that's what that, that entire project is, is designed for, and that started with Director McIntyre years ago. Not every year are we able to fund it, but it's something we, we strive to do.
Okay, thanks.
And the money, the $130,000 right now, the money that's in there, that was allocated for Shanghai. Shanghai was the next one to be replaced.
We, as a council, should be taking a look at that annually as well, right? Just to make sure the numbers are fresh, and where we can fund, we can fund. Awesome, thanks.
I guess that was going to be along the lines, in lines of my question. I'm assuming it is, otherwise you wouldn't be requesting it, but we're dipping into the other funds, but the, the amount at which we're dipping in, that is, is within your comfort zone, as far as what's left?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Looks great, by the way.
You looked at everything.
I'm sure you did, but you know, gotta do that.
Nitpicked.
Looks great.
Thanks.
Sir? Did you have some?
Yes, through the mayor. I, I just would like to commend staff on this project. A year ago, we had a group of people who stated before, a group of people that came before us and brought a concern, and it was a safety concern. I, I use that corridor all the time, but I don't, I don't get out and, and get on the playground equipment, and, but it's, 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 if you've been through that area, it's, that park is very well-used. And just to watch how quickly our staff jumped on that and, and saw that it was a safety issue, and here we are, not even a year later, talking about, and, and, oh, by the way, we, we did involve the public in picking out the, what's going to, what's going to replace it, too. So I think this is, this is a home run all the way around, and I would, I very much like to commend staff. This is, this is your government at work. I mean, this, this is really exciting and fun to watch, so thank you.
I do have pictures of the other ones, too, if you, if you wanted to see them, but that was the one they picked.
Sir?
Through the mayor.
When this was brought to us over a year ago, or not quite a year ago, I went out the next day and looked at it, and there were several parents there where, that, I mean, gave a lot of really good input, and walked through the park with me and showed me what was actually going on. So yeah, a great job for the, from, from the park, from the park and recreation, that you, you've listened to people, and I know they're very appreciative, so, thank you.
It's nice to be able to have a concern brought forward that we can pick so timely. It doesn't always happen that way, so I agree, all the way around. All right.
Through the mayor.
Sir?
Ms. Gillan, just a couple of questions here, actually, Mr. Morrison, this may be for you. As part of our budgetary process, as we go through it this next year, we know that we've gone through several of our parks recently, new equipment, the new park, can we see some kind of schedule or something as far as when we anticipate the next park needing to be replaced? Kind of looking, you know, projection for the next 15, 20 years, because we've been using CDBG money and everything else to fix the parks all along, so I'd like to see that, if that's possible.
We do, we have put a schedule together, we do have a schedule that we're working on, and we do have a list of the parks and how old they are, and what would be next, and everything for this new budget year.
Perfect. And then the only other question I had is if we move forward tonight, because this did start last August, what is an ETA, you know, with all the sunshine we're having lately?
Yeah.
Are we looking at this possibly being completed by May timeframe?
We're hoping. I mean, once we get the approval and everything, we can order the equipment, then we'll have the timeline on when the equipment's going to get here, because, kind of like when they gain, how the stuff is manufactured and stuff, and then as soon as good weather, then we can get it all going. So we're hoping, yes, we're hoping to move it quickly. I can't say with the weather, but hopes is by May.
Through the mayor.
Sir?
I've got a background. Is there, there's no supply chain problems with playground equipment, because?
Not that we've heard of from them. It was, um...
Because I know I had to wait quite a while for my facility, when I bought it years ago, and it was, it came from Georgia, I think, and there was a little bit of an issue there, so, yeah, if you could get on that.
Yeah. I wish I had it with me, I don't have it with me, but I have original dates, like how long it's going to take, the weeks and stuff, but I just don't remember what their, I want to say theirs was eight to 11 weeks.
Oh, that's great. That's a great turnaround.
Yeah, it's not too bad.
No other comment, we can do the action.
Through the mayor.
Yep.
I move we adopt a resolution that takes the following actions that was listed tonight, adopts a CEQA Class II category exemption, awards construction contract to BCI Burke Company an amount of $258,947 through Sourcewell, and authorizes the city manager to execute all necessary documents, and authorizes the Finance Director to make the budget transfers necessary, necessary to fund the Shanghai Garden Park Playground Replacement Project.
Second? All right, have a motion to approve from Vice Mayor Shaw, second by Councilmember Bubengard, and all those in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
And opposed, none.
Thank you.
Yes, approval, thank you, Ann. It's going to be nice. Moving on to item number 18, community sponsorship request from the Plazium. Hello, Sierra?
Hello, good evening, Mayor and council. I'm here this evening to present a sponsorship request that we received from Plazium. As you may know, Plazium is a local organization that helps serve our youth and the folks in our communities, so that they have programs and exhibits and things that they can play with together. Their annual Touch a Truck event, which is scheduled for April 13th, provides an opportunity for more than 3,500 residents to get up and, up close and personal with a variety of different vehicles. The city has participated in this event in the past. So this year, we received a request, sponsorship request from Plazium, both for a monetary sponsorship up to $2,000, and for in-kind services and participation from city staff and vehicles in the event. Monetary sponsorship of up to $2,000 would utilize one or both of our dedicated sponsorship accounts, and you can see the available balances in those accounts here. The budgeted funds are to be considered and allocated on a quarterly basis. So the fiscal impact, obviously, if you chose to approve a monetary sponsorship, that would be in the amount of $2,000 or in any amount that you choose, and the estimated in-kind costs associated with staff and the vehicles participating in this event would be approximately $18,1662. And that is going to include a couple of police vehicles, the street sweeper, potentially an engine, if we can get, you know, an engine and a driver available for that day. Alternatives would be to approve monetary sponsorship only, or, option two would be to approve an in-kind contribution of equipment and staffing only, or three... to approve an in-kind contribution of equipment and staffing only, or three, don't approve the request at all. Staff's recommendation is to consider the sponsorship request from Plazium, both the monetary sponsorship and the in-kind participation, and if approved, adopt a resolution approving their request from Plazium. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Through the mayor. Yes, sir? What are they gonna do with the two thousand requested monetary contribution?
So, they have, as many events do, they have a variety of different sponsorship levels, and with that, you can get your name on the banner, you can get, you know, some, contribute some sort of swag item to the bags that they're giving to attendees. There's different levels that you can choose. So, the highest level, of course, is two thousand, and then the lowest, you know, can go all the way down to one hundred dollars. So, depending on at what level we come in, it's, you know, how big is your logo on the banner? How, how, how many tickets do you get? There's kind of a little package for each level.
Any member of the public have anything to comment or a question? Nothing? Okay. I'm sorry, sir, were you gonna go?
I just did the math. It's about a dollar nine a kid, if you're a person to go to this thing. If we give the thirty-eight, I think it's thirty-eight hundred dollars approximately. It's pretty good.
Dollar nine?
Turn on our dollar.
As is so common, I had the same kind of like, love the program. Love it, love it, love it. I'm wondering about the two thousand dollars when we have other projects or requests coming in along the same lines.
Just to be clear, the initial requests came through for the in-kind participation, which is what we have done in the past. And just for clarification purposes, I did reach out to try to understand, is it only for in-kind, or are they also asking for a monetary sponsorship? Because they included their, you know, flyer with all the different sponsorship levels. And their response was, of course, we want the in-kind, but if you're able to provide any sort of monetary sponsorship, we would be grateful for anything that you, that you could offer.
Okay, I'm glad to hear that. Grateful for anything. Did you, were you gonna say something?
She answered the question.
Okay. Okay, I'll be quiet unless there's any other input. Again, love the program, appreciate the clarification, anticipation of other very, other programs and requests that are gonna come through with limited money. The in-kind, no problem. I would say maybe we consider pulling back to one thousand dollar contribution as far as just flat-out cash. I'll just throw it out there, make that motion. Open for discussion, opposition, or anything?
I would be in support of that, Mr. Mayor.
Sounds like it. We have a motion to provide, I don't know the numbers, it'd be a total of two thousand seven hundred and whatever the math is.
One thousand dollar monetary sponsorship, and...
So, twenty-eight sixteen sixty-two total. We have a motion by me, seconded by Councilmember Boomgarden. Yes, sir?
Possibly a friendly amendment to this, if we can go back to the funding source, because it's a, that one right there, because this is a monetary contribution, I think the thousand should come out of sixty-six oh one oh, the community contributions account number, being specific.
Sure. Are we captured that properly, Mr. City Attorney? Okay. So, we have the motion for the total of whatever it was, one thousand instead of two thousand, which in that, and that thousand we're technically saving will definitely go to other worthwhile causes we have coming up and predictable. Ideally, things like this would come up during the budget process anyway, but definitely support the program, so there it is. Anybody have any comment on that, or, okay. So, now, yeah.
I have a question. So, Vice Mayor Shaw, you mentioned it coming out of the community contribution account versus the community event. Is the, what's the thought behind contribution versus event?
It's a monetary contribution, and I would see that as sponsoring anything else that's going on in the community versus a community event type. I see, you know, it's six one-way, half-dozen the other. Why'd you ask me?
And the only reason I bring it up is because the sponsorship for Trees and Traditions, which is a similar type of fundraiser-type event, came out of the community event account versus the community sponsorship account. And so, community sponsorship would be maybe some type of event that's not necessarily a fundraiser. That could be, you know, like when we contributed towards the Cotton Roster statue over in Mary's Well, something like that. So, I just want clarification. It's, whatever council's direction is, that's fine, but just keeping with tradition of how we've charged these previously. That's why staff's recommendation was to come out of community event.
Okay, I didn't quite see that, 'cause it was the two funding options up there. So, I'm fine with whatever we've got precedent set.
Okay.
I was looking that we had the two up there, and that was what game goes and went. Well, which, where does it fit best? So, if we've got precedence, then I'm fine with it.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You're good?
We're good.
Okay, so, we're reamending their friendly amendment. Is that correct?
Yeah, we're reamending the friendly amendment to the other funding mechanism.
All right, if we're all clear on the motion and the second, I will ask for, all those in favor to signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We have five in favor, opposed, none, good. All right, good. It's really good to be a part of that. And we are on number nineteen, future agenda items. This opportunity to discuss, city manager, about items that came up in the meeting this evening and that you would like to have brought back to council at a later date. Do we have any comments from the public on this? And from council? None. Now, we'll go to reports and communications. Following reports and communications, items are provided for the council's information. No action can be taken on items under this section unless the council agrees to include it on a subsequent agenda. Number twenty, from city manager Diana Langley.
All right, mayor, thank you.
All right.
I just want to note on the Home Key Grant, that the mayor and then Councilmember Boomgarden were part of a council ad hoc that worked with Habitat for Humanity for about a year to cite a Home Key project. And then, once the, the site was selected, there were multiple staff that participated in that process and worked with the Habitat team to try to come up with a project that would, number one, be beneficial to the community, and number two, be something that we could all support, including council support as well. So, so as much as Mr. Nicoletti specifically mentioned me, no, there's a much larger team behind this. And so, I just appreciate everybody's participation in that. Also, just to report, council previously took action on removing the crosswalk at Yuba City High School. That crosswalk has been removed, so thank you to Public Works. Also, upcoming presentations, we have quite a few scheduled. So, for the vacant property on the north side of Franklin, east of Plumas Boulevard, Ashley will be bringing a presentation forward in May to talk about plans for that, that property. And we're going to include James Corliss of Secog. I'll let council talk about the Tera Buena Community Workshop, but this meeting survey results will come forward on March nineteenth. Previously, Councilmember Pasquale asked about a presentation for the vacant surplus property on the north side of Bridge Street between Gray and Cooper. That will be coming forward on March nineteenth. Also, Ann and Megan from SASSA will be bringing forward Feathers to Farms Update and SASSA Annual Report. We're still scheduling that. And then, at the March nineteenth meeting, the Yuba Sutter Economic Development Corporation will be bringing forward a presentation on the comprehensive economic development strategy. So, the March nineteenth meeting's gonna be very heavy with presentations. Also, Ashley has her first shop talk scheduled for March twentieth at So Patai. And then, in relation to development, Wayback Burger is open. If you recall, that's in the Rayleigh's Shopping Center. And then, also Raising Cane's and Dutch Bros over in the Harder Marketplace area, both have building permits that are ready to issue. So, a lot of excitement with development, and you'll soon see a very large sign at the Harder Development that not only highlights the project, but then also highlights you can with Yuba City. So, with that, thank you.
Lot of good stuff. Thank you, Diana. Let's go to Councilmember Boomgarden.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, want to thank the vice mayor for attending Sabuca Meeting while I was out of it, and appreciate that. The only other thing I have to report on, and I'll briefly report on it, and I'll leave the majority of it to you, if you don't mind, Mr. Mayor, is the Tera Buena Community Workshop. And so, it was a week before last, I believe. And I want to thank Mr. Moody and Mr. Libby and Ms. Patouchnik. See how I said that?
Yep, got it.
And Ms. Langley as well, and the mayor and I attended. There was a hundred and twenty people from the Tera Buena Community that chose to attend, which is great. You know, the more that we can get the public involved in, in an effort to share information, which was the main purpose of that meeting. It was a good turnout with a lot of discussion, and I'll leave the remainder of that to go to you. But it was, it was encouraging to see that level of public participation. I wish we could get that at all of our, our community events, 'cause we really, I know this council especially, is very, very interested in hearing from the folks that we represent. That is it.
That's very, I'm not sure what I can add to that, but yeah, definitely an interesting meeting. Councilmember Kirchner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll keep this short. Gilser was canceled this month. Mosquito, we did a land speed record. We got through an eleven-minute meeting. There wasn't much on the meeting, but we got through it. I would like to thank Councilmember Pasquale for covering for me, for Sabuca and Transit while I was, was out of town. I did attend the Food Bank Dinner, which was very well-attended and was for a very worthy cause. Lastly, I would like to commend city staff on items, business items twelve and thirteen, the city welcome sign and the city, the water tower. Both of those projects are grant-funded. City, the welcome sign was through Secog, water tower was Clean Cities, and city staff had a large part to, to bring that money in. It had to do with listening to the community, identifying a need and fulfilling that need. So, I would like to give my thanks to city staff for addressing that. And that's all I got.
All right, very good. Councilmember Pasquale?
Thank you, mayor. Attended ethics trainings on the methicle. Food Bank Dinner was phenomenal. It was really a great turnout. The ladies that put it on were just in awe of the outreach. They told me that they kept having to add tables, people wanting to buy tables, which is, that's where they made their biggest buck on, which is great. It's great to see the community step out and do that. Sabuca, I did sit in for Councilmember Kirchner, and I had the pleasure of elect, or nominating our vice chair, Boomgardner, while he wasn't there. Also, attended Transit Authority.
Admitted it.
Transit Authority was interesting, because I, they were looking for an alternative place to put their buses while they're having their construction, and I threw out the idea of looking into you, because they were going all the way out to Yuba County Airport. And I spoke with, at the gala, the Chamber Gala, with the chancellor, and they were very interested in stepping up and helping Transit Authority relocate and make it a little bit easier and close, closer for the community or the transit to relocate there. The Gala Chamber was very well-attended. It, it, it's just amazed me how, how many, how many people come out to these things. The, so it was mentioned about people wanting to be, contribute and, and interact with the city government, and the crosswalk thing was a prime example. I had gone over to the principal of Yuba City High, 'cause he's in my district, and they're our neighbors and all of those things, and I said, whatever you, you get, get a hold of me if you need something. And they did that. They stepped out and they touched, and they wanted to get that crosswalk for that safety reason, and the city jumped right on it really quick. I've driven over it now, and there's no longer a crosswalk there, which is great, so it will alleviate those, the danger that goes on with that crosswalk. So, with that, I conclude my report.
Very good, thank you. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, sir. Busy, busy couple of weeks for myself. We'll start with Yuba Sutter Transit. Lot of the focus has been on the next-gen facility that is gonna be built over the next several years and the funding for that. Likewise, you know, the new buses have started to arrive that over the past time, and we are getting rid of some of the old buses and actually looking to lease those to other, to other transits. But one thing that's gonna be changing in Yuba City is going to be the new route schedule that they're going to be running, and it's going to be a simpler route that's going to be through. And so, talking with the director of Transit, it would be nice if Matt could come over and give us an update of how that's going to affect Yuba City, because it's going to change throughout the entire area, but Yuba City is phase one. So, it would be good to know exactly how that's gonna roll itself out. And he was anticipating that that would be starting, I believe, this summer, so somewhere in the next few months, probably not March nineteenth, so, but another time. Then, we moved on to RWMA, and with Regional Waste Management, everything's about thirteen eighty-three, getting those numbers up. Yuba City has the largest number of non-compliant businesses out of all the municipalities. Go figure, we're the biggest municipality, so we're gonna have the largest concentration there. In order to come into compliance, businesses at some point will start being transitioned into the three, three dumpsters like we all have at home. So, the, the blue, the gray, and the green. When that starts to get ready to roll out as well, it would probably be good for RWMA to come and give us an update as far as what they're going to do, because they are going to... Hi, Larry. You're fine. But, but that will be happening in the next few months. Yuba City will be the last one in that, that it affects. Sabuca, as I sent you the text, congratulations, vice chair. They are working on the certification continually of the two-hundred-year levies, so they anticipate that to take roughly three to five years based upon historical recertifications. They're looking at the Sutter Bypass, and all the jurisdictions have passed the additional tax like we did, the levy assessment. We were the last one, so that will be coming into effect, but their focus really seems to be on south of Shanghai Bin and then the bypass. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for covering for me for the school district. I appreciate that. And then, the Food Bank was awesome, the Chamber Gala was great, all you guys looked great. So, with that, I'm done.
All right. As Vice Mayor said, I had the opportunity to participate in the school district liaison meeting, which is pretty apropos, considering we had the Tera Buena Community Meeting after, right after that. Lots of positive things going on at the school district. One of the questions that were asked by our city manager was their capacity. I think probably she asked it because we knew we were headed to the Tera Buena that night. And sure enough, the, the question came up, and it's a very valid question, is what are we gonna override the school districts with, with children? We're adding all these homes, particularly a apartment complex with over a hundred doors, right? And we were assured that, no, they have the capacity and they can handle it just fine. Another concern was police and fire response and their ability to handle that, and our department heads have also reassured us that they can handle it. And so, that was very nice to be able to say that directly to this large, pretty...
Animated?
Animated, not animated, but animated crowd, who they were, they were happy to be there, they had their, some opinions, they had some questions, some comments, and like Councilmember Boomgarden said, we want that. And it was mission accomplished as far as reaching out and being in the community and getting feedback from them. So, we're, I think we're answered, answered a lot of questions. I think we were successful in communicating what options were, some of the traffic options. The primary focus of the meeting was, of course, traffic in that area out there. Many attempts were made to steer it to the apartment complex that is proposed for out there, too. But as far as options of cul-de-sacking off several roads to direct traffic, primarily to highly-used roadways such as Western Parkway, punching Jefferson through to D.R. Spain's Park, and putting a signalizer... punching Jefferson through to DRS Baines Park, and putting a signalized intersection at El Margarita, punching George Washington all the way up through, straight up, straight north up to Monroe. So, we had all the maps out there. People were able to gather around and discuss them with, with staff. And they put the, with the method of putting the dot on what you approve. And so, Ashley will be presenting in March, the results of that. Ben and Ashley, both of you guys, thank you so much for being there. All the red lasers on your, on your chest, we managed to, to get rid of all that. And I think, you know, I think the vibe I got at the end, when we walked out of there was, you know, we, we were able to literally hear what their concerns were. We were able to alleviate some concerns, I think, and answer the questions and get feedback. And that's what it's all about. As we, as we use that information to move forward from the decisions we are gonna be requested and required to, to make on that area out there. So, it was very good. And thank you again, Diana, too, for being there. And then, that is, I did have the opportunity last week to represent the city on the, in Japan for the Sister City Program, the 35th, 35th year of cultural exchange opportunities between the city of Toride, Japan, and here in Yuba City. And it's, it's still remarkable when you go there how, except for some of the architecture and the signage, of course, is so similar to home. And Takagasa, Yukio Takagasa, he came here 30, over 35 years ago, looking for places to sell, and market strawberries. And he came up here and immediately hit him how the Sutter Buttes remind him of a mountain range in the distance in their community called Mount Scuba. And they have a river going through town. They have rice fields. And the size is roughly the same. They're right at about 100,000 folks. And so, it's, it is very interesting to see that. And these folks open their homes to us. And we get to literally live and sleep and eat in their private homes. And so, that's, talk about behind the scenes look at another culture. And the students get the benefit from that. And they will, they will take that experience with them forever. And so, we get the opportunity and the honor of returning the favor. When they return, I believe it's October 28th, well, yeah, to give or take a couple of days. But we had a good meeting about that. And they are also looking forward to coming here and, and, you know, doing the reverse effect and taking them places and showing them our culture. Anyway, it was very interesting, as always is, very heartwarming and life-enhancing. And so, I think we do that. We have that opportunity. We'll continue to do that. They're very enthusiastic about continuing the program. And the fact that we survived a three-visit, but four-year break through, through COVID is remarkable. It shows the testament to the steadfastness and the desire to keep the relationships going. So, it was very good. Some very good conversations and some good friendships were made. And I will leave it at that. Spencer, thank you for, and the Sister City Association primarily, they're, they're the big one. It wouldn't happen without them. School district comes in, the city representatives comes in. We're all, we're all going there as a delegation. I believe there's 15 of us total that went this time. And hopefully, they'll have every bit as much come our way. So, anyway, that is it for that. It was a pleasure to be a part of it. And unless there's anything else, and unless I'm forgetting something, we are adjourned. 8:35.